Hello and welcome to the 1,163rd Regular Meeting and Public Hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in the audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plaits and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal a decision in writing to the City Council. Resolutions that are adopted by the City Planning Commission become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
Present.
Mrs. McQ.
Here.
Mr. Banjero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Beated.
Here.
Karen Magno is here. Chairman Wilshott.
Is here. Thank you. And also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina, our Planning Director, along with Deborah Walters, Scott Miller, Stephanie Reese, and Jacob from our Planning Department, who may assist in the meeting tonight. We also want to thank our Channel 8 staff, or Livonia Television staff, I should say, for being here tonight as well to bring this meeting to our TV viewing audience. So with that, I do want to let the folks in our audience know that the general format of how these meetings proceed is that we will start by having the, each petition read out by our secretary, and we'll then go to the Planning Director, who will give some background information on the item. We'll have an opportunity for the petitioner and their representatives to speak to the Commission and answer questions if we have them. And then we'll, of course, have an opportunity for anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak for or against an item to speak. So that's how each item will flow, and we ask that you use the raise hand feature within Zoom to let us know that you would like to speak when it's your turn, either as a petitioner, a representative, or as an audience member when we ask for audience communication. So with that, that's the format of the meeting, and we can now go into item number one on our public hearing section of our agenda. Mr. Secretary?
Yes, Petition 2020-11-02-10, submitted by LS Equity LLC. They're requesting approval of all plans required by Section 11.03 N3, 18.47 and 18.58 of the City of Livonia Zone Ordinance. Number 543 is amended in connection with proposal to redevelop the commercial shopping center, shops of Livonia, including demolishing a portion of the existing building, constructing a full-service restaurant with drive-through facilities, which is a Chick-fil-A, constructing in addition to a full-service restaurant, no, I'm sorry, constructing a tenant retail building with drive-through facilities at 29250 to 29350 Plymouth Road, located on the north side of Plymouth Road between Haller and Middle Belt Road in the southwest quarter of Section 25.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, and Mr. Toramina. Mark, we don't hear you. We're not getting any audio from you, Mark. I'll just wait one moment for Mr. Toramina to reconnect his audio. Hopefully, it's working now. We hear you. Chairman, and hopefully you can see the graphic on the monitor.
Yes, we do.
This is a request to develop a site that is at the northeast corner of Middle Belt and Plymouth Roads. The site in question totals roughly seven and three-quarters acres. It has roughly 480 feet of frontage on Middle Belt Road and 185 feet of frontage on Plymouth Road. There is an existing multi-tenant retail building on the site that contains a floor area roughly 85,000 square feet. The property is Zoned C2 General Business, and located closer to the intersection at Middle Belt and Plymouth is a vacant commercial building that was constructed in 2003 as a Walgreens Pharmacy. That building is not a part of the site. At one time, it was, as well as the Firestone Complete Auto Care Center facility, which is located immediately to the east of this site along Plymouth Road. So we're looking at just the seven and three-quarters acre that's highlighted on the aerial photograph. So the site would be developed in, or redeveloped in three phases. And Phase One involves demolishing portions of the existing retail building and constructing a new Chick-fil-A restaurant, which would be adjacent to Middle Belt Road. Phase Two, as you can see on this diagram, involves the redevelopment of the area along Plymouth Road, and it would involve the development of a new multi-tenant retail building in an area that is currently used for parking adjacent to Plymouth Road. And then lastly, Phase Three involves expanding the existing retail building and undertaking facade and other parking lot improvements. So we'll talk about Phase One first. Again, demolition work would proceed on the existing building to make room for this Chick-fil-A restaurant. About 26,000 square feet of the 84,000, 85,000 square foot building would be removed. The new building would be located between the downsized building and Middle Belt Road, which is in the northwest corner of the property. The proposed Chick-fil-A would have 124 interior seats, along with 24 outdoor patio seats, bringing the total to 148 customer seats. The building would be one-story in height, and it would contain a gross floor area of 4,995 square feet, so just under 5,000 square feet. The outdoor seating in this space is on the south side of the building, which is the area facing Plymouth Road. Major component to this is the drive-through facility. There would be two drive-through lanes. They would commence at the southeast corner of the building, and then proceed north, where they would loop around the back of the building, and then finish at the pickup window, which is located here on the west side. The menu and ordering area is shown in the northeast corner, just before the turn, at the back of the building. These inside and outside lanes would each have the capacity for 19 and 21 vehicles, respectively. Both lanes, as you can see here, would be 12 feet in width, which complies with the ordinance. The adjacent drive aisles would serve as the bypass route, but this would be for the outside lane only. So you'll notice the area immediately adjacent to this outside drive-through lane is available for circulation. So if, in the event, any of these cars wanted to pull out of the drive-through lane, they would have the opportunity to do that. Again, that only applies really to the outside lane and not the inside lane. Overhead canopies are shown at two locations along the drive-through. One is at the menu and ordering area, and the other one is at the pickup window. These photographs provide an example of what the canopy would look like at the menu and ordering area, and these next photographs indicate what they would look like at the pickup window. Stripe crosswalks, as you can see here, would be provided for safety and to effectively space the queued vehicles. Back to the site plan, there are five existing driveways that provide access to the site, and all five would remain to serve the new development. Three of the driveways are on Middle Belt Road, and two are on Plymouth. Two of the driveways are actually on the former Walgreens property, one on Middle Belt, one on Plymouth, and both provide access to the subject property via cross-access agreements. So just to familiarize yourselves again with this plan, this is Middle Belt Road on the left-hand side. Here are the three existing driveways, one in at the north, at the north end. It'll be referred to as the North Driveway. Then we have the so-called Middle Driveway on Middle Belt Road, and then the South Driveway on Middle Belt Road. This is one of those driveways that is actually located adjacent to, or part of, the adjacent property. This hatched area shows the cross-access that exists between the properties. Then on Plymouth Road, here are the two driveways, one referred to as the East Driveway on Plymouth Road, and the other as the West Driveway, also located on the Walgreens property with cross-access agreements. None of the driveways are signalized, but as part of the development, the two main approaches, which are the Middle Driveway on Middle Belt Road and the East Driveway on Plymouth Road, would each be widened. Looking at the exterior of the Chick-fil-A restaurant, it would contain entirely, it would be entirely consistent brick. The canopies are shown here above the windows and entrance areas. The height of the building is about 20 feet, four and a half inches in height. These are the renderings showing the north and south elevations of the building. This would be the side facing Plymouth Road and then the back of the restaurant north. Underground detention is part of Phase One, and that includes the construction of a basin that would be beneath the main parking lot in the area that is behind the main retail building. And by the way, this building is referred to as Retail Two. The smaller retail building that is proposed is referred to as Retail One, and I'll show you that one in a minute. So Retail One includes the construction, or excuse me, Phase Two involves the construction of a second multi-tenant retail building, again, identified as Retail One on the plan. So this new building is at the south end of the parking lot. It's adjacent to Plymouth Road between the Firestone and the former Walgreens store. This building, too, would be one-story in height with a gross floor area of roughly 8,900 square feet. As you can see here, access would be provided via connections to the shopping center's existing driveways and parking aisles. The exterior of this building would contain different shades of brick. Again, it's a full brick building. The height varies from about 19 feet or 20 feet to roughly 26 feet. The west end cap is shown having a drive-up facility, a future restaurant with drive-up window facilities. The site plan shows, in this case, a single drive-through lane, which is along the north and west sides of the building with the capacity to accommodate roughly nine vehicles. Lastly, Phase Three involves a 5,378 square foot addition to the northeast corner of Retail Building Two, which is the existing building. That addition would measure 39 and a half feet by roughly 140 feet. With the expansion, this would bring Retail Two up to a total of 63,434. You'll recall that the existing building is over 84,000 square feet in size with the demolition along the west end of the property, and then this addition, it brings the total back up to about 63,400 square feet. Besides the expansion, the entire storefront elevation would be renovated. The architectural, architecture and the materials are intended to complement the design of Retail Building One. The exterior finish would contain a brick with new parapet wall sections that would vary in height, and as you can see here, would project above the existing roof line. The changes to the other three elevations of the building would consist primarily of CMU. So this top rendering or illustration is the side of the building facing road, the primary facade, if you will, where all the storefronts are located. The west side of the building is the second drawing down. You can see that the brick finish would include roughly half of the west elevation of this building, and then the balance would be the decorative CMU. This is the rear of the building facing commercial, and then the west side facing the residential area, and the Firestone is located here also, would contain CMU. Looking at the parking, parking is based on the total amount of retail floor space on the site for a group commercial center with more than four establishments, and where less than 15% of the gross floor area is devoted to restaurants. The parking is computed at a ratio of 100, one parking space for every 150 square feet of usable floor area. So when we combine the square footage of all three buildings, 77,330 square feet is used to determine the parking. This results in a requirement of four, 413 parking spaces. The site plan presented to you this evening shows 397 parking spaces. So there is a deficiency of 16 spaces, which is roughly 3.8% of the total number of required spaces. A fully detailed landscape plan was submitted with the application. I won't go into the details here. This is a blow-up of the area around the Chick-fil-A restaurant, and this is the area around Retail One. Also, with this plan, all of the landscape islands would be replanted. We are suggesting, too, that the area along Middle Belt Road be relanscaped as part of the redevelopment of this property. Details are provided on all the trash enclosures on the site. Site lighting, we really don't have any detailed information on site lighting, but it's our recommendation that the, all the poles not exceed a height of 20 feet to be consistent with the existing parking lot lighting. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence at this time.
There, please.
We have, all items of correspondence are from our interdepartmental, and first is from our Engineering Division, and it's dated November 17th, and it reads, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time. The property is assigned the address range of 29250 through 29350 Plymouth Road, with an address of 29250 Plymouth Road, assigned for the overall parcel. The legal description included on the plans submitted by the owner appears to be correct and should be used to describe the parcel. The proposed development is currently serviced by Public Water Main and Sanitary Sewers. The submitted drawings indicate that new utility connections will be constructed to service the proposed building layout, but they do not indicate whether the new utilities will be private or public. Depending on the ownership of the proposed utilities, easements may need to be provided. The drawings do indicate that underground detention for the stormwater is planned, but there are no calculations for the systems at this time. The proposed construction will be required to meet the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance, including detention requirements. A full review of the proposed development will be completed when plans are submitted for permitting. It should be noted that although the City of Livonia will be reviewing the utility plans for the project, additional permits from Wayne County and the Michigan Department of Transportation will be required for work in the Middle Belt Road and Plymouth Road right of way." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter received from our Livonia Fire and Rescue, dated November 12th, indicating that they have no objections to the proposal. That letter is signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. Next is a letter from our Division of Police, dated November 11th, that reads, "I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I have the following objections to the proposal. I am concerned with the driveway just south of Chick-fil-A. I expect there will be a high traffic volume coming from the business and utilizing that driveway. There is a great possibility for traffic congestion and traffic crashes for vehicles attempting to exit and turn left onto southbound Middle Belt. My recommendation is to post a right-turn-only sign at the exit." That letter is signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the City's Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter from the Inspection Department, dated December 10th, that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed, and the following is noted. Number one, signage shall be installed according to the ordinance. All excess signage will require a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And two, parking spaces are required to be 10 feet by 20 feet and double striped. This department has no further objections to this petition." Next is a letter from our Department of Finance, dated November 12th, indicating that they have no objections to the proposal. That letter is signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. And lastly, a letter from the Office of the Treasurer, also indicating that they have no objections to the proposal. That letter is dated November 12th and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. And that is the extent of the correspondence, Mr. Chairman. Great. Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions from any of the planning staff for, or excuse me, any of the planning commissioners for our planning staff? If not, Mark, I just have one quick question. The only deficiency on this plan is in parking, correct? It's the only reason they'd have to go to ZBA? The signage for the Chick-fil-A is clearly beyond what the ordinance requires. If you look at these renderings, and we don't have details on the signs, but in this case, a sign, only one, well, two signs, I believe, would be allowed, one facing Middle Belt, the other facing Plymouth Road, as this would be treated as a corner property. And the plans, I believe, show signs on all four sides of the building. So that would require a variance, certainly. Okay.
I apologize, Mr. Chair. Can I ask a quick question?
Sure. Go ahead, Ms. McQ.
Mark, I'm just wondering, not a ton of frontage on Plymouth Road, but will the PRDA be seeing this as well?
You know, we will bring it to the PRDA the next time the board meets. In this case, it really won't involve much in terms of streetscape, new streetscape improvements. There could be, unless the PRDA wanted to see some modifications to the existing, what exists along the frontage today. But yes, Ms. McQ, we would intend to submit this either to the full board or to the executive committee sometime in the next month.
I agree. There's not a whole lot, right, in that space. That's why, but consistency, I guess, is always what we want to take a look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great. Any other questions for our planning staff? If not, I know our petitioners are in the audience. If you could just use the raise hand button to indicate who you are, Mr. Jarboe, and Mr. McPherson, and I think a few representatives on this particular item. Very good. Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Jarboe. Good evening. You can unmute yourselves and introduce yourself.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your time. I know that we are in different times now, meeting via Zoom. Normally, I love to be in front of the Planning Commission Board and discuss this great project that we do have. I first want to introduce everybody that we do have on our team. We have Jenny, that's our project manager, Mike McPherson from Atwell Hicks, which is the site engineer. We have Justin from Chick-fil-A, and then we have Michael, that is from our traffic study that we did on the site. I know that last week, when we went through the study session, we had a lot of concerns and some questions about traffic. We went back to Justin and the Chick-fil-A staff, which has done a phenomenal job, I have to say, with other store openings, and they plan to do the same thing here. They have developed a plan to work on the traffic, adjust the traffic, and I think that was provided to the Planning Commission staff on how we have a plan in place already, even though the store's probably another eight months away from opening up. But want to be transparent with that plan, want to have the, you got the Planning Commission take a look at it, have the city take a look at it, and see if we can adjust in any way. We have given Chick-fil-A the authority to do this plan and to work with inside our vast parking field that we do have in order to, you know, accomplish a successful opening. I do have to remind everybody that, you know, we know that Novi opened up, and Novi opened up during COVID conditions where there was no interior seating allowed. That created a little more influx on the drive-through, obviously. We hope that, we all hope that that goes away, and then we're allowed to sit in restaurants again. But, you know, hopefully, when that does go away, by the time that happens, and Northville will be opening up here soon. So to, you know, we'll have two stores in the area. Northville is set to open up next month, and hopefully drive some of that honeymoon period over there and get that out of the way. So that way, when this opens up, it's not as, you know, maybe as busy as the other ones to begin with. And that's, you know, we have another store, hopefully, in Canton, opening up, but we don't know the timeline on that. But hopefully getting there soon and deviate also from this traffic as well. I know that after the meeting last week, we talked over Mark, and he said that the Planning Commission did have some concerns about the phasing process and how long all this would take for the, ultimately, for the whole project. Our full intention is to get this done as soon as possible, meaning Phase One, the Chick-fil-A, Phase Two with the Outlet, and Phase Three of re-having that existing building, all four facades on it. So timeline, I would say that, you know, construction also being, you know, a part of it, and winter conditions, you know, we'd love to get all of this done with between, you know, 18 months, which is a realistic timeline, possibly two years, depends on, you know, tenants and what we have going on. But we hope to have this thing completely wrapped up within that 18-month timeline. So it's not as if we want to, you know, go in there, construct the Chick-fil-A, and then, you know, sit with our arms crossed and wait for the next tenant. We're aggressively marketing this development. We have a lot of interest on that Outlet, and that Outlet could potentially turn into a single-tenant use. We do actually have a credit union that's taking a look at it right now. So it necessarily, I mean, what we, we're coming in to get this, to get the retail approved, but, you know, in retail and everything else that we do, and everything else that you're seeing out there, it's constantly changing. When we first, our group first purchased the property over a year and a half ago, we put multiple plans in place and let the market dictate to us what, ultimately, what we would see here. We had a couple of different variations, and, you know, thankfully, we've come to an agreement with Chick-fil-A. We hope that you welcome them as we have, but we think it's a good plan. And, you know, I'm here to answer any questions, any concerns, and whatever else you guys need, so.
Thank you, Mr. Jarboe. And just for our record, can we get your address?
So 4198 Orchard Lake Road, Suite 250, Orchard Lake, Michigan.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And with you tonight, you have Mr. Lurk, who is from Chick-fil-A, correct?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Lurk.
Good evening. Thanks for having me again. As Mr. Jarboe stated, would love to be there in person in front of you all, but this'll do for now. As Mr. Jarboe stated, you know, we regrouped as a team after our call last week and came up with a proposed traffic plan. Typically, our grand opening team would put that together, but, you know, upon your request, we certainly understand that this'll, you know, this was an item of importance, if you will. I think we're faced with a pretty unique situation here. I wish all of our sites were seven acres to where we could utilize the majority of that property for our openings. This will certainly be unique to this property, and I appreciate Mr. Jarboe and team allowing us to do that. So what you're seeing on the screen now is just a proposed draft of what a traffic plan could look like. I'll try to walk you through that. So let's start down on Plymouth Road. So if you're heading westbound on Plymouth Road, all of the red arrows represent how you could potentially enter into the property, or what we think the traffic plan would be to enter into the property. And we would try to direct traffic into the east, the middle, or I'm sorry, Plymouth Road east entrance. We would hope that they would pass by the west entrance and could accomplish that with some signage for, you know, not now, not allowing them to enter into the second curb cut off of Plymouth Road, but rather directly on north on Middle Belt Road, and then entering into one of the two. and then entering into one of the two entrances off of Middle Belt Road to queue into our drive-through lane. As discussed last week, we would propose to temporarily close off the middle, the middle access point off of Middle Belt Road, as you're seeing there. And then if, for some reason, you're heading north on Middle Belt Road and you missed the first entrance, and the middle one is closed off, you could go all the way to the north entrance, entrance and enter there. And we would propose to route traffic all the way around the existing retail building. And then you could see, we would propose to block off the drive aisle in front of the retail building, just so people, again, to consolidate the flow of traffic and not have so many points of ingress egress to get into the drive-through and direct traffic into one main route to get into the drive-through. And as you, as you pick up your food, the blue arrows would represent the, the path that you would take leaving the drive-through. And we would propose to direct all traffic to the south towards the vacant Walgreens parcel. And then you've got choices, either head north or south on Middle Belt Road, as you can see with the blue arrows there, or route around the, the vacant Walgreens parcel on that cross-access and get down to Plymouth Road and either head west or eastbound on Plymouth Road. But we feel this accomplishes the concern around traffic. We would, we would provide this draft traffic plan to our grand opening team and give this to them. So when they do get on site, they've got a, they've got a running start on how, how to potentially direct traffic on site. So I wanted to go through that. As, as mentioned, that was the, the main item of importance that we talked about last week. And we're certainly here to answer any, any and all questions that either the commission or the public would have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lurk, and I believe we need to get your address as well for our record.
Great, yes, thank you. Justin Lurk, 5200 Buffington Road, Atlanta, Georgia, 30349.
Yeah, great, thank you, sir. And Mr. Jarboe, I believe you wanted to add an additional comment?
Yeah, so also here with us tonight, we have Mr. Lapperty. He's the traffic consultant that was hired to perform a traffic study on it. And piggybacking off of Mr. Lurk said, I'd love for him to jump in here and explain. I think he gave you guys a, a bullet point of that comprehensive study that he did do.
Okay, great. Well, welcome, Mr. Lapperty, to our meeting tonight.
Hi, how are you? How's everyone?
Good, good, thank you. And again, we'll start with your name and address as well for our record.
My address, the company address is 27280 Hagerty Road, Suite C2, Farmington Hills, Michigan. Four eight, four eight, three, three, one.
Perfect, we appreciate that.
Haven't been there in a while, though.
Yeah, well, at least it's in our minutes.
So we can, if you'd like, I can go through the study. I, I don't know if any of you tried to struggle through it or not, or, but I, I think I, the study in itself is one that we started where you have to get a scope of work for what, and in this case, we had to go to MDOT, and we had to go to the city. And Middle Belt is owned by the county, so we went to the county and asked for them for a scope, what they wanted to see in the study. So we've reflected that in what we did. As far as the PowerPoint goes, the first, the first slide here that you're seeing is existing conditions. The existing conditions are, how is it working today? And what kind of things are challenges today that, if there are any? And operationally, there's some, a couple of things that we found looking at that. I don't know if you can see it very well, but there's a, a kind of a challenge that's there. If you look at the aerial view and you look at the traffic queues on Middle Belt Road versus the traffic queues on Plymouth Road, it's kind of a typical thing of what's, what's going on out there. There's a lot more traffic, maybe nearly double the traffic on Middle Belt that there is on Plymouth. And so that's a little thing that shouldn't be going on, that is. But anyway, as we, as we went through this, you might, might wonder how we, you know, how can you do traffic counts and do a traffic study now when hardly anybody at the time is out on the road? We had to get historical counts. We went out and did a count of the turning movements, and then we upped the, the accounts based on historical information. So it was a, again, that's something that was accepted by MDOT in the, in the county. Okay, so can we scroll to the next? The way these traffic studies work, there's an analysis that's put together by the Federal Highway Administration, and it comes up with something called Level of Service. And Level Service has grades A through F, A being good and F not being so good. You can see the, the, those are seconds of delay, those little categories in the boxes there. And they're a little bit different for a signalized intersection versus an unsignalized intersection. Suffice it to say that Low Service D is considered acceptable. And there are an awful lot of intersections, like driveways and unsignalized intersections out there that, that come out onto public high-volume roads that are operating at a poor level of service. But that doesn't really, if you think about saying you're in one of those drives or establishments, say, on Middle Belt, and you try to pull out, you're there twenty seconds to, to a minute easily, depending upon the time of day. Let me go to the next slide. So today, you have Middle Belt Road and Plymouth Road intersection operating poorly, if you's relatively speaking. You have the southbound approach operating at Level Service E, which in, in a lot of cases, that's not such a bad thing, given in an urban area with a lot of traffic on it. But overall, the intersection's operating as C in the morning and D in the afternoon. And that's, that's a calculation of the four approaches for, come up with a number or a, a letter for the intersection as a whole. The others are all stop sign controlled driveway types. And to have a forty-second delay in the morning at the Middle Belt, the north driveway, is kind of telling you that there are no gaps in the Middle Belt Road traffic is probably what that's telling you. Down on the bottom, same thing on, on Plymouth Road in the evening. In the evening, these are sometime in the morning of seven to nine, and sometime in the evening, four to six. So we have some challenges getting out onto Plymouth Road in the evening at the, the Level Service E. Can we go to the next slide? One of the things that we found is we looked at this intersection and, to be honest, we didn't, I don't have any explanation for this yet, but I can, I don't even want to speculate. But the intersection right now, if, if you have left turn phases, in other words, you get a green arrow to make a left turn. On the opposite direction, it's usually when that green arrow is on, the opposite direction right turns are able to be made without any conflicts either. This intersection, what we're proposing is that this intersection could stand to have that, and it doesn't. So we're, we're saying that, that something good to add, it reduces the delay, and people get a, a green indication and they can make a right turn in the opposite direction of the, of the left turns. Another important thing that is not there, but it should be, it seems, is that push buttons are there for people crossing, make sure I got this right, crossing Plymouth, but they're not there for crossing Middle Belt. And Middle Belt is the one that needs more green time. Right now, Plymouth is getting more green time than it should, and not only that, but it can't get any, can't give any to Middle Belt because there's no pedestrian buttons. The idea with the pedestrian push button is that it gives some minimum green time, but it doesn't give all the green time that would be necessary for a pedestrian to walk all the way across the five or six lanes. So if there were push buttons there, the intersection would be able to reallocate green time and give it to Middle Belt, and those queues that you see in the, in the aerials wouldn't be there, or certainly it wouldn't be as long. So we're kind of recommend, those two things are, are items that are existing problems that we're not quite sure that while, because it wasn't that long ago, the intersection was modernized. So I'm not real sure about that, but it's something that needs to get dealt with. And it's, it's an MDOT and Wayne County coordination thing, I think. But nonetheless, it's somebody's going to have to go back out there and do it. Next slide. Well, you already learned about this. Next slide. So in the future, if you notice, there's two tables here, one with improvements and one with no improvements. If you don't fix the challenges that I pointed out at Middle Belt and Plymouth, you end up with some new challenges when you add our site development traffic to it, and you grow the background traffic. As far as the other, the driveway approaches, they go up, the lanes go up because there are, again, especially coming out on the Middle Belt, it's going to get worse until we get it fixed, getting the signal fixed, we will end up with better, better traffic flow and, and more gaps to get out. But that's where this one shows, there's an awful lot of information that says we need to get that intersection timed better. Future improvements, it shows that a, that the Middle Belt and Plymouth intersection gets better with those changes we talked about. The middle driveway has some challenges in the PM peak hour, and the Plymouth Road East driveway has some challenges in the PM peak hour. So for the most part, the site can accommodate the, the traffic, but there's a, you know, some, some changes that need to be made at the intersection. Can we go to the next slide? Man, I kind of explained all this already to save you some time, but the, 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 not only does it add the green arrows and the pedestrian push buttons, but we're, we're talking about changing the cycle length on the traffic signal as well. So we're also recommending that there be a one-lane inbound and two-lanes, so each, each approach would be three lanes instead of two, uh, coming out of the site. Next slide. Any questions? I mean, it's kind of a, it's a sort of a thick report, and I tried to gloss over it a little bit, but does anyone have any questions that I could help with?
I appreciate that, Mr. Lapperty. It, it is difficult to go through an entire traffic report in, in a short time, so you did a good job. Do we have any questions for staff at this point? Mr. Toramina, I see he has his hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lapperty, could you explain, just, just clarify? This is a good, probably a good example, Middle Belt Road and the north driveway. When you identify westbound traffic, what exactly are you referring to? Westbound and, and eastbound? I'm, I'm guessing northbound and southbound are the vehicles turning out of the north driveway, either heading north on Middle Belt or south on Middle Belt. But I don't quite understand, maybe eastbound is turning from Middle Belt Road into the north driveway, but then what is westbound? Maybe this-
Heather, you, there's a, there's a challenge. If you, can you see the, look at that, that, if you're, you're close to it, move your arrow up a little bit. You see there's a driveway that's a little bit offset. You see that? It's on the west side of the road.
Maybe if I go to the arrow, aerial photograph, it'll show it?
Yeah. You can't quite see it. Yeah, right there, yep. Traffic actually uses that, and we counted that as a, as an adjacent street. It makes it a little difficult if they, if they happen to go out of there, because there's a lot more cars, and there's an offset kind of conflict, convoluted in the problem.
Okay, so just to clarify then, when you say westbound, then you're talking about traffic that would exit this north driveway, go all the way across Middle Belt Road and enter-
No, they're just going westbound out of that approach.
They're going westbound out of that-
Out of that approach. Whether they turn left, right, I don't, too, not too many of them go straight through.
Okay, so westbound would be just headed in this direction?
Correct. So it'll have a, a right and a through and a left out of there.
So that level of service relates then to all of the turning movements at Middle Belt at the north driveway?
Correct.
And but then northbound and southbound are referring specifically to through traffic on Middle Belt Road or turning vehicles on Middle Belt?
Through traffic on Middle Belt.
Through traffic.
And Middle Belt doesn't have to stop, so it's free.
I see. Okay, thank you. That helps, uh, helps me better understand the, the structure of the report.
They don't try to make it easy, but that's, that is what it is.
Well, thank you. Any other questions from any of the commissioners for the traffic engineer?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagnon.
I, I do, I do agree. It was a, it's hard to lay this out in, in a short period of time, but there was a lot of discussion about the changes that need to occur at the intersection, Wayne County and DOT.
Correct.
Whose responsibility is that, and what would be the timeframe in coordination with a, a Chick-fil-Aer?
Well, it, it's, that's a problem right now. There's no Chick-fil-A out there, and those queues and the, the, the poor operation is happening today. Who's responsible for that? If, it seems to me that Wayne County should come, should have complained, and they, they may not even be aware of it, I, I don't know. But they should have complained to MDOT when they did this. So it is, is an existing problem, and it's something that should be worked out, because when you have a, an intersection, a signalized intersection with the MDOT road, MDOT actually owns the signal. So the participation in the cost and the design of it, the changes, should have been coordinated through Wayne County, but I don't know. I, I really don't have a good explanation as to why it's working the way it does.
Well, I, I understand that, but in, in putting the Chick-fil-A on this corner and rehabbing the corner, which, which it needs, it, it further contributes to the problem. So how, what gets DOT off, on, on the ball here, or Wayne County on the ball? Does the developer put a request in that he's got a problem with the intersection that he shares? Or who, 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 who gets this thing cooking?
Hopefully, the city now knows about it, and then the city gets hold of Wayne County and the state, and they point out, Mike Lapperty came up with this problem, the study in this intersection. Can we meet about it? I think that's what you should do. It's, it's a strange, unique problem, but it, it's, it's something that I think the city ought to run with, because they know, you know about it, Wayne County and, and MDOT do not know about it at the moment. Unless the develop, you want to take it on part of the developer to, to contact them, but I'm, it, it would have more clout to get done if the city did it.
Can, can, can you hear me?
I hear you, Mr. Jarboe.
Oh, okay, sorry. We are more than willing to maybe work with Mr. Toramina and also Wayne County and MDOT to try to get this thing resolved. As, as Mr. Lapperty has said, that this is an existing issue, and Mike, with making the corrections there, and obviously existing the way it is, it would help it tremendously. But with the refinement that you're proposing and having the Chick-fil-A there, in, in your opinion, it still could work, obviously. I'm assuming that, okay.
Yep.
So we've done this in other areas where we've gone into redevelopment. We'd be more than happy to work with whoever it is on the city staff, but we would need- But we would need some support from them to carry more clout with Wayne County and MDOT. But we are more than willing to step up and get that done, hopefully with the timeframe that we do have, which we have done in the past. Wayne County's been a little bit difficult to get a hold of that point, but MDOT has been very good to work with. But we more than willing to, uh, to interject and try to get that resolved.
Yeah, perhaps our, uh, city engineer can help facilitate that as, as our, uh, sort of official in the city who is, uh, responsible for, uh, engineering and which would include traffic engineering to that extent.
Absolutely.
That, that would be a great thing if he, we could get him involved.
Okay.
So between Mr. Laverty, your engineer and us, we could, we could show a good force and get this thing done.
Right. Though it's interesting that you point out that the right turn, uh, lane signals, the arrows are, are not there. And that's a recommendation to improve those because I, I have noticed in the last several years, uh, many intersections as they've been upgraded, including this one and, uh, Farmington and others. They've been removing those arrows and I, I don't know if that's a, uh, change in the Michigan manual of traffic control devices that's requiring it or why, why these right turn arrows are being removed. But it's, it's something I've noticed in many intersections throughout the city.
I don't know if they're the, for the same reason. I'm not sure that, that, it might be just, we'd have to check that out as to why they're taking those out. Cause this, this is a popular thing to do. Uh, it helps.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that will sit at the intersection and wait because they're not sure if they can go or not.
Correct.
So, interesting. I, I didn't know as a traffic engineer if you were aware of any, uh, changes in the, uh, uh, rules that would re, that, that would justify why they're taking these out.
Well, sometimes they, I mean, I, I don't want to speak for the, make it too generic, but sometimes they were up for no, for the wrong reasons and they're making improvements. You don't see too many of them with this, uh, doghouse kind of configuration is what you need. So.
Good point. Well, thank you. Uh, any other questions from any of the commissioners for our petitioner? Or any of the representatives?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bon, Mr. Bonjero.
Yeah, for, um, I'd like to ask Mr. Laverty, um, kinda going back on Sam's point. So right now, it needs to be adjusted the way it is right now. This is for Mr. Laverty, right? So right now you're saying this intersection, whether this Chick-fil-A goes in or not, should have these timing adjustments and modifications done, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so putting Chick-fil-A there, we know is going to increase the volume tremendously. At least we think during the honeymoon period, it's going to get, there's going to be a lot of people trying to figure out that entire entrance and exit. And so if the city doesn't step in, to me, this would have to be resolved before that Chick-fil-A opens. Or we're going to have chaos down there. That would be my thought. Would you agree with that?
I don't, I don't know about chaos and I don't know about that, but I do know you're, you're, it would sure make things a lot better if it was. Uh, either with, with or without Chick-fil-A, it would be a good thing to do. So it is important. I don't know that, that, uh, I mean, certainly if you put a Chick-fil-A in there without making the changes, we're going to have to look at re-timing that signal to make it at least a little more optimal than it is now. So some of it and one, a couple of the things might be a really, although I'm, I'm 99% sure it's not a hundred percent the right thing to do, but you could set it up so you could just have the pedestrian crossings the opposite of what they have there now. And that would, that would help a lot to reassign green times for pedestrian crossing. Uh, as far as the arrows and, and the, and that, 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 that could take a little bit longer, but there are some short-term intermediate or things that you could do real quick that I don't think would take very much to do. Um, but I still think you're right. It'd be great to have this done before Chick-fil-A and, and the site's operating. And it's not that hard to get it done. It's just a matter of getting everybody to agree to it. And unfortunately, there's what, three parties here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for, uh, petitioners? It could be on tra- traffic or anything else.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mrs. McQ.
Um, I think at one point you had indicated, um, that that middle, uh, entrance off of Middle Belt would be temporarily blocked. Am I correct? During the opening phase? Did I hear right?
This is Justin Lark with Chick-fil-A. That's one, that's, that was a recommendation that we had.
Okay, during the opening, what, how long? I mean, just hypothetically, during, uh, cause I agree with you. I think the honeymoon phase is going to be critical in there, but what was your thought process when you, um, created this, this, this flow? Um, how long would you think that would be closed or blocked off? Or would it be always blocked off? Would it be during peak times?
I, I think, I think you would block it off with, in, instead of just cones, you know? I think we've all seen sometimes people don't adhere to cones, that you might need some more permanent, uh, barricades. Um, you know, for a, for a week or two, starting off while everyone gets used to it would be my, my initial feel. I think that's, that's up to, you know, once we get open, you would have to certainly play that by ear.
Right.
It's cute.
Okay. Okay. And then the other thing was, I think, um, the Traffic Bureau had indicated that they would like to have a right turn only indication at that exit as well. Um, what is, I guess I'm not sure who's, who, who that question is geared to, but what our thoughts are for that. Cause trying to get out of that particular entrance or exit and turn left on the Middle Belt during peak time is going to be very challenging.
That might be mine to add, answer. Um, a couple of things. One is that if we get the, the signal re-timed and the modifications implemented that we were talking about, getting in and out of that driveway is going to be easier. Uh, you won't get the queues that you have there now. So whether you're not, you're kind of trying to relate to the existing condition, um, just know that the existing condition be, could be quite a bit improved. Um, so again though, it, it's the operation of a, of a stop sign controlled uh, access onto a, you know, relatively high volume road is a function of gaps. So if they're not, there's fewer gaps on the higher volume, so it, it's going to be more of a challenge getting in and out. I, not to the level though, that, um, we would agree that a right turn only needs to be there. Um, again, that we're going to have to get some kind of an approval from, uh, Wayne County on that too, because they, they control the permit.
Correct.
Correct.
So it would be a, uh, probably a call by, uh, Wayne County and they probably would, I'm going to say that if they ended up, they would probably allow it the way it is. Where we're recommending it with, uh, you know, a three lane approach, two out and one in. And if, if some sort of problem manifested itself, they might, they might resort to, you know, a right turn only. Eliminate the outbound lefts. That's possible.
Okay.
So one, Mike, this is Frank. Um, just to clarify, the gaps that you speak of in your traffic plan would indicate that at Middle Belt at the corner, there would be a, a stop. At that point, that would create the gap to allow somebody to make a left-hand turn lane. And that's what you're talking about, adjusting the timing on, on those particular, uh, lights to allow that gap to happen.
Right. They would, they would, the, the intersection approach would clear, the traffic would clear, uh, more regularly and more completely. Right now it doesn't do that. So, uh, that, that's the point is that you, you get it to work.
Yeah, if you were to, if you were to time those more efficiently, even now, it would help out tremendously. And with having Chick-fil-A there, it would create the gap that's needed so that once the honeymoon period is done for Chick-fil-A, somebody gets successfully to make the left turn out of there, correct?
Correct. Yep, that's correct.
So one more thing is, you know, with your experience and, you know, um, what you've done here, and I'm sure that not all of us have had the experience that you have had, how difficult it is of a process is to work with Wayne County and MDOT to get these, uh, these changes implemented. And would we, you know, if we're talking about possibly in the blessing of the planning commission, having this be a uh, fall, call it late fall opening, is that timeline, you think, uh, appropriate to get these, get the, get these changes done?
If we get moving, yes.
Okay.
But we're going to need help with the city on this to, so I, it seems like the, the city would be committed to getting this working better. So I, it, it's not a problem if, if we can get some help with the city.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Ms. McQ, is that, uh, are you set?
I'm good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other commissioners with questions for our, uh, petitioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wong.
Yeah, I, I just echoing on Ms. McQ's, uh, concern about the left turn on the Middle Belt Road. I also see the, uh, you know, the, the suggested path of the exit, uh, on the Plymouth Road with a right-left turn option as well. And I think you're going to have the same problems, um, trying to turn left. So again, not necessarily, uh, a question for anybody, but I think as this is all looked at, that once, it's got to include thoughts about that as well.
That's a good point, Mr. Long. And in regards to, uh, the gaps for southbound, uh, traffic on Middle Belt, uh, which seems to be the, the biggest concern that we have, the, the thing that's creating those gaps is going to be the traffic light probably up by Costco and, uh, Millennium Park, because that's probably the next, uh, the most, the, the next most northern traffic light, uh, that would create those gaps for southbound cars.
Right. I mean, I know you're going to have the, the get, the light there at Middle Belt to, to stop the, uh, eastbound traffic, but you're also, I mean, that intersection stacks up pretty good with the westbound traffic. And, you know, I mean, I know people can, sometimes people can be polite, sometimes people can't be. But, you know, I, I think that'll, I think that'll be a challenge. I'm just, I, I, I don't know how you solve that unless maybe you, you do left turns coming out of the, uh, the easternmost, uh, driveway rather, you know, or at least try to direct people down there.
All right.
That's all. Like I said, not really a question, just a comment. Thank you.
Good comment. Thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments from any of the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura and then Mr. Toramina.
I guess this first for Mr. Laverty. I'm looking at your report, uh, trip generation for proposed development. And, um, I've never really read a traffic report before, so I'm going to say I'm interpreting this. But my question is, is that an estimate of the added traffic that you think Chick-fil-A is going to add to this area?
Uh, are you looking at table one in the report? Okay, good. Uh, it's not just Chick-fil-A. It's other, other parts of the development as well. So, but the Chick-fil-A numbers, you know, the third list down, it talks about type of land use. It talks about the size. Then it says AM in, AM out and total. That'll be the total number of inbound in the morning during that peak hour. Hundred and sixty, oh, I'm sorry, fifty-one and then, uh, fifty-four out for a total of a hundred and five. The peak hour in the morning sometime between seven and nine. And then in the afternoon, sometime between four and an hour, the peak time between four and six, which is, and I, the reason those study, those times are there, because that's when the traffic peaks on Middle Belt and Plymouth. Uh, so that, yes, that's the numbers that will be there for just the Chick-fil-A during those peak hours.
And if I read the footnote under the chart correctly, these are all based on a Chick-fil-A down in, uh, South Bend, Indiana. Is that correct?
Right. They have, they have.
Why did you not use, uh, the store in Novi?
Well, the store in Novi, nobody collected that data. These are studies that were done by other firms before the data was published. It's not, it's, uh, pretty much accepted practice to use the similar uses, uh, generating similar trips. That's not a uncommon thing. If I were to, if you, if you look at the, uh, shopping center numbers, for example, if you go into the IT trip generation manual, probably find out that there are hundreds of offices that are from all over the country, not just around here. So that's kind of how it's done. That's all.
I took your word for it, but my experience is only with Novi. And the, uh, the volume that, I think it's Mr. Lurk used the phrase honeymoon period that they've had out there and it's been literally hundreds of cars in the parking lot at Twelve Oaks waiting to get into the line to get onsite. And once they're onsite, based on my count, when I walked through or when I drove through it about a week ago, there were between seventy and eighty cars in line. Um, so I'm imagining that during the honeymoon peri- period here, um, we could see two or three hundred cars trying to get on the site. And.
That's possible.
I don't know where you put them.
So, Mr. Ventura, that's also because there's no restaurants open right now and, and, I mean, you're very limited on food. So, I mean, that's, that's, that has a little bit to do with it, I would say. But also, I don't know if, you know, maybe Novi is a good indication of what's maybe, I mean, it, it doesn't have the parking field that we do. I'd be more than happy to pick you up and we can go to Allen Park. They have the parking field and we could talk it over with a chicken sandwich. I mean, I'm just trying to compare apples to apples. I mean, that's, that's it. And, uh, you know, it's unfortunate that, yeah, COVID is, uh, what's happening. Um, but it's also that a tremendous amount of restaurants are all closed. And, uh, you know, obviously the choices are very limited when you want to go out, you know?
There's, there's another.
I'm not trying to deter that, that this won't bring traffic. It definitely will. So.
Frank, there's another point that for Mr. Ventura that I think you got, we have to keep in mind here too, is that, um, there's not a lot of competition for Novi's site yet. So the popularity, uh, is going to wane a little bit as, as we get, as you get more Chick-fil-A's constructed. So there are a few more coming online, uh, soon. And, um, that will influence the outcome and the terrific, the traffic's going to be here too. That's why the, um, traffic numbers that we put in there in the study that from the Indiana, uh, was because that's a steady state situation at a time when there was no COVID.
Well, I guess, um, first, first of all, um, Mr. Luck, uh, pointed out that you don't put these restaurants, uh, close together. The closest he said that you put them together is five miles. So when I went to a source that provides me with demographic information, I, I discovered that the population within five miles of Novi is half of the population within five miles of this restaurant. So I don't see Novi, or I don't see Northville and Canton relieving pressure on Livonia. I think we're going to have tremendous response to this restaurant, you know, which is all good for everybody. But I'm not convinced that we have a plan that is going to accommodate the kind of traffic that this thing is going to generate uh, during the honeymoon period. And I'm not sure that we have a plan that's going to generate, that's going to accommodate the traffic on a continuing basis. I, I was, uh, talking about this in my office and, uh, one of the people that works with me sent me a Fox News article that, uh, talked about the Chick-fil-A in Ohio being sued, um, by the adjacent businesses because the Chick-fil-A traffic, um, was blocking, was using their parking lots and blocking entrance to their businesses. And, um, you know, we got a McDonald's immediately to the north of this. We have a huge shopping center, uh, southwest of it and the shopping south of it. I mean, we have all kinds of neighbors around here. And the last thing we want to do is choke off the, uh, circulation in this area uh, to the extent that, uh, it damages their business and. Uh to the extent that uh it damages their business and uh creates, you know, an ongoing problem. I guess I guess that that's a thought. Uh I agree with uh Ms. McHugh and and uh. Other commissioners that making a left turn out of the site either on Middle Belt Road or on Plymouth Road. Um is gonna be nigh impossible. So I mean, I just, you know, and and I understand, Mr. Laberty, that you're doing a lot of projections here, which is what you do for a living and I respect that. But in your presentation, you made reference to Wayne County and MDOT uh many, many times. And urge that, you know, we need their help to resolve this, which I certainly am not arguing with. But I'm uncomfortable approving this without having some response to them from them to say, yeah. Your traffic study makes sense and we agree with this and let's let's get this done or. No, we don't think we don't agree with this and we have some other plans that need to be accom- uh accommodated. And some other solutions that we want you to consider. But at this point, it's, you know, you're kind of asking us to approve this on faith. And having seen what's happened. In Novi, I have to tell you that I'm not, you know, I'm not a believer at this point and so. And I and I apologize for that, but that's just exactly the way I feel and I have to I have to be honest with you. One other point was that at our study meeting, we talked about. How do we regulate traffic in the roadways? And out of Novi, they have private security people because the road, the ring road around the shopping center is private road. They are not. According to Mr. Toramina and others, uh able to. Uh private security people are not able to reg- regulate traffic in the in the state and county roads. You need police officers. And so I believe Mr. Jarboe or somebody said that, well, we'll hire police officers. But um. Who does who determines when they're needed? Who pays for them? And I understand that this restaurant's gonna be owned by an individual. And I don't see him at this meeting and I don't hear him making a promise to us that, yeah, he's gonna spend the money to hire these to hire these police officers. Or to pay the city back for the expense that they had it occurs. When we have, you know, a couple of hundred cars trying to get into the site and people trying to turn left and turn right and go all over the place. And trying to figure this out. Now, you know, after the restaurant's there for a couple of years, I'm sure it'll get figured out. But we don't want to do a lot of damage in the period of time that we're waiting for everybody to figure out how to navigate the site. And to enjoy a Chick-fil-A sandwich. So I mean, I just, I personally, I feel like we're we're a little bit ahead of the curve here. Because I don't feel that we have the. Honeymoon period traffic that's that I feel certain is gonna be generated based on. The surrounding population and the lack of adjacent restaurants. Figured out. And and so I have a bunch of other notes, but I've taken enough time and I think I've made it plain. How I feel. I I'd be much happier and feel much more confident about proving this. If we had more answers that somebody was saying, yeah, this has been approved by MDOT and this has been approved by the county and. And here's how this is all gonna work. Um and and with some degree of certainty that. Everybody kind of bought into. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Uh what I'm hearing from you is is and I I think it's a very good point is. You would definitely feel more comfortable if you had folks like the city engineer and MDOT and Wayne County. Kind of signing off on this in advance saying, yes, we've looked at this, we know what the plan is, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. So that we know that this is not going to crater the the entire traffic flow in this area, correct?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you stated it better than I did. Thank you.
Uh that's what I that's what I heard and I I think you you said it very eloquently and it is an excellent point, so thank you. Um we have Mr. Tormina, I believe, next, and then we'll see if anyone else wants to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um to Frank and uh and maybe Justin. For the regarding this graphic and the uh the grand opening uh period. I'm I'm curious and then it really uh refers back to comments that Mr. Ventura made relative to the impact on. Adjacent commercial properties and uh I'm looking at this plan and how it might impact. Uh the um expected occupancy of the building in the southwest corner, the former Walgreens. And I understand you may have cross-access agreements in place uh to utilize these uh driveways. Uh but I'm wondering, and this is something to explore as we move forward with through this process, but. If you could take this, at least this incoming uh drive-through traffic. And uh route that further to the north through the middle of the parking lot. To the extent that the site will be under construction still, maybe phase two, it opens up some room there, it doesn't impact. Uh as bad uh the uh the the si- situation with the corner property, realizing that. Uh that could be um uh occupied uh or under construction. Uh and um we don't have a a large demand right now for traffic uh for the existing retail. So to move this and maybe even uh the the, you know, you would have the flexibility of of adding a second. Uh westbound lane, so maybe one or two lanes heading in this direct direction somewhere in the middle of the parking lot. That would then turn uh north uh to the drive-through. I I I throw that out as a suggestion because I I really see. You know, a lot of um potential conflicts here, especially uh should we have this site. Um under development or occupied by the time the uh the Chick-fil-A is.
We have no problem moving that. No problem at all. Agreed with it, we can get that definitely done. Justin, can you speak to maybe help Mr. Ventura understand that uh when new stores do open up and how far they are away? How much does it impact the the, you know, if Northville opens up next month? And where Novi is right now and hopefully we're in a COVID-free, not COVID-free, but you know, restaurants are back open and a lot of sit-down seating. What what do you feel like that's gonna pull away from uh a Chick-fil-A over here in Livonia?
Yeah, so there there were quite a few comments brought up and I I would agree with you, Frank. You know, we we looked at putting uh Mr. Toramina, we looked at putting that uh drive or temporary drive a little bit further north. Um but just just to try to get that um merge point as far away from the Chick-fil-A building we we chose to the south. But again, this is a draft and I think this could be a fluid plan. The good news is here, again, it's over seven acres. I I can't think of another Chick-fil-A in our portfolio where we had seven acres to to work with. You know, so I think that should all give us a little more peace of mind, right? Some of the other restaurants that we're talking about are an acre, uh less than an acre or an acre and a half, right? Um so I I think that's one advantage to this location. That and the fact that there's multiple ingress egress points, which gives consumers choices uh helps here as well. But to go off of, you know, facts and figures, again, to reference the west side of the state when we opened up in um. Uh Grand Rapids, we opened up Grand Rapids South as our first location. And saw similar demand that you're seeing in Novi right now under COVID, pre-COVID conditions. Then we opened our second location in Wa- Wyoming, Michigan, uh which was about six, six or seven miles away. And the uh the staff there was was concerned as well, but. At that opening, they only saw the the honeymoon phase spilling out of our site just that first weekend. Uh and we've got a letter, we've got a letter of support from uh a city official over there to another city kind of stating the same thing. Hey, I think you're, I think you're overestimating the honeymoon period. We only, we only saw that during the the opening weekend. Um so that I think that's a good example of what we could be faced with here. Um so I I wanted to bring bring that up again as well. Uh one point was. You're not hearing from our our local owner-operator. Uh that that's for a reason they have not been selected yet. The way our our model works is corporately, we we find the sites and then we work with developers like Mr. Jarboe. Uh we go through the city process because this is a sole source of income, it's their only source of income. Um we bring the franchisee owner-operators on uh right before the store would open. Because they have terminated any previous employment, so they're without a check for a while. Uh we can't ask them to be doing that for a year, you know, sometimes a year or eighteen months if we go through. Uh a city process and construction and development. So the the local franchisee owner-operator um would be working with the the city. And again, you know, we would typically hire private uh security to help with traffic, but a lot of municipalities will just. Put cops out there to be proactive. Uh they don't always charge us back, but when the when when they do, we're we're happy to oblige and and help out there. Because that's a that's a service they're providing to us. So I wanted to, I wanted to answer answer those few questions as well. Does does that help?
It does. Thank you, Mr. Lurk. Um let me see if there's anyone else on the commission. We've spent a fair amount of time on this already. I don't want to let anybody uh get missed here. Is there anyone else in the commission? Uh wishing to address any issues with this development, be it Chick-fil-A, traffic, or either the other buildings on the site?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Smiley.
Yes, um did we, um I'm sorry, I've been having a lot of tough technical difficulty tonight, so I lost you for a little bit there, but um. Did they do us a traffic survey on Hagerty? Was there any traffic survey prepared for that?
Yes, we did a, there was a traffic study done on Northville. I think that's what you're referring to, the Hagerty Road location in Northville. Yes, yes, ma'am. There was a traffic study done there. Um there were no improvements recommended based on that traffic study. But there was a previous pending improvement um from Target. They added a traffic signal. That um at at one of our entrances, again, that was a an improvement that that Target had had put up there. So if you go there now, you see you will see a traffic signal to get into the Kohl's development that's across from the uh the the Target development as well.
Okay.
There was not, there was not a signal there when we first started looking.
No, there there are now currently a lot of signals on Hagerty Road. And uh and that Hagerty Seven Mile area. Yeah, they uh I know there was some building going on there and they did, they're supposed to synchronize all the um lights. Because there's so many and there's another uh building going up on Seven Mile or another development right on Seven Mile. Just uh by the two seventy-five exit, so um I just wondered if you had any, there was any. There was no recommendations, that's what you're saying?
That that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiling. Uh any other questions from any of the commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bonjero?
Yeah, just for uh Mr. Uh probably Mr. Jarboe. Um so phase one sequence, just so I'm trying to get a hint on like what you would accomplish with phase one would be. Come in, tear off the the west end of that existing strip mall. Rebuild that end and do partial facade coming across around the side and across the front. Build the Chick-fil-A. Do the underground detention, front and back, right? And then resurface the whole parking lot? Is that what your plan is? Like all the way up the driveway coming up off of Plymouth Road? All the way over to Middle Belt, that whole and that's gonna be all done phase one?
So, yeah, we can, we can definitely work in those parameters. What we normally do is, on a situation like this, just like you said, we come in there. Demo the building, uh reconstruct that west wall um and do and wrap around front to where the Office Depot. And hopefully by that time, we would have a tenant for that last bay over there and do that as well. So then all four sides would be done. We would put brand-new pavement around the probably the entire site. And even if we didn't have tenants for maybe phase two at that point, we would still build that out and make it in pad-ready conditions. So we wouldn't have to go back in there with heavy equipment so that, you know, we, you know, make it a pad-ready conditions. Maybe leave it dirt, but leave the parking area field intact and create more parking. And then just uh also redo obviously the landscape beds and redo the lighting, all brand-new LED lighting. Um we want to get as much done as possible. Um you know, it it co- it costs more money to continue to come back and. Do phase one, phase two, phase three, phase these out. I would love to come in there and just do all of it at once.
Yeah, I guess that's why I'm I'm, that's what my thought was too. I I mean, you're gonna do all that, I mean, it's gonna be pretty much restored. And it's gonna look pretty good until you do any other, any of the other phases. Everything will be pretty much. Ready to go, right? I mean, everything's new.
I think any, I'm sorry, uh any work would be, any work, any additional work would probably be interior fit-outs for each individual tenant. Um and I mean, I, you know, again, I mean, that's, it just to come back here and do, you know, this. Long, strong-out process and over a three-year period, it just doesn't make sense, economical sense, it doesn't make sense to the community. Always under construction, but we want to get as much possibly done. Um again, I'd love to do it all at once and that's what our our goal is. That's our first goal, to get it all done at once. Even if we were to leave the interior bays on the inside vacant, uh we do build these um a little bit. Uh the storefronts interchangeable so that if we did get a tenant and they wanted a door in a certain place, we could move that around. Obviously, that costs a little more money, but it's easier to do that than to do full full-blown construction um on a site like this.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions from any of the commissioners? If not, let me just check with our audience. Uh well, first, before I go to the audience, uh. Uh there are some other folks, Mr. Jarboe, on your team that are in our audience. Uh is there anyone else on your team that's wishing to speak? In regards to anything that we've heard so far? Uh if so, you can always click raise hands that we can um recognize you and allow you to speak. And if not, uh I do want to go to the audience and give them a chance to speak for or against this petition as this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience uh who would like to speak for or against this item? If so, you can click raise hand. I will give you an opportunity to speak. I don't see anybody raising their hand, so uh I will go back to the commission, see if there's anyone else uh on the commission wishing to. Ask any questions or make any comments. And I don't see anyone on the commission, so then I'll take one last shot over to the petitioner, Mr. Jarboe. Is there anything else that you'd like to add before we uh close the public hearing and make our decision?
Yes, if you don't mind. Um I would uh love to just add that, um you know, I know that this is maybe. Uh looked at as maybe heavy, traffic-intensive um uh uh development. I think, but if you take a look at the overall plan and what we're planning on here, we're enhancing a very dilapidated uh development that. Sat vacant for a very long time, uh like I indicated in the first meeting. This was an out-of-state owner that I bugged for years and years to sell it to me. To so that we could go in there and redevelop it and this is what our specialty is, to go in and siteless this. That had been absentee owners, don't care about it, and revitalize it. Um. We've done numerous developments around town. Uh Mr. Toramina, if you want to reach out to Plymouth or Canton. I'm sure the planning commission, uh the planning uh uh guys out there would would, you know, give us, give you a thumbs up on what we've done. Um we 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 hold true to what we do, we follow through, uh we work hand-in-hand with the city. To try to make sure that uh our plan uh works for them and for everybody else in the community. I just want to add though too to is that Justin's done a a tremendous job in a lot of store openings. I I I can't tell you how many store openings he's done, he's done quite a bit. Um and with him and his team, they're very committed when they come into a a situation like this. And the ability to to develop a site like this and uh work with the municipality, work with the uh the local operator. Um and try to execute correctly. And I think that we have an advantage on on our site that aren't necessarily always there for Chick-fil-A. If you look at the seven, uh the Hagerty location, it probably sits on an acre and a half. Again, we're sitting on seven acres, which, you know, we are basically vacant and we could accommodate and stack and help with. The traffic flow. And when you look at Novi over there, um you're looking at one point of ingress and egress where we have fa- five multiple points. Ingress and egress. We've identified um uh items in the the signals that can be changed and help. I really feel that um Wayne County and MDOT with, with the city's help, that we could definitely get them to agree on that this is a better format, um, well, what Mr. Laverty has recommended. Um, and that, you know, we could definitely get that done before the timeframe of this Chick-fil-A being open, if it is approved. Um, I just, I hope that everybody recognizes the amount of effort, amount of work that we put into this, a lot of thought. We, we just didn't slap a plan together and say, hey, can we get this approved? No, we put a lot of time and effort and understanding and worked with Mark, which he's been tremendously great to work with. And the feedback that we've gotten from you guys, and I think we, you know, yeah, and within a week, um, Justin got us back a, a plan of, 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 of opening. Um, when normally they don't even have those plans in place until maybe a couple of months prior to opening. But, you know, we wanted to make sure that, you know, you had all the information, the data that you do have. Uh, we've spent a lot of time, money, and effort to consult with Mr. Laverty to understand what needs to be done with those lights. Uh, what needs to be done, you know, can the site accommodate a Chick-fil-A? And he clearly addressed that a ten. Um, and making those changes to the lights. And we're, as developers, fully committed to getting that done. Um, and, and working with the city and the county and, and MDOT to, to work on that. So again, I would appreciate and hope that we get this plan approved, then we can move forward. Um, and again, we're not absentee owners, we're not out of the state. Offices are right down the street. Uh, Mr. Tormino and I will become good friends, whether he likes it or not. And understand how to get this thing done and get it, and, and get it executed and get it done. So. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jarboe, and I'll just let you know, Mr. Tormino is a very easy guy to make friends with, so. You're, you're in good shape there. Uh, with that, if there's no other comments, we're going to close the public hearing at this time. And a motion would be in order.
Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
Uh, I'm gonna make a motion, but before I do that, I want to uh compliment Mr. Jarboe and Mr. Locke and Mr. Laverty on their presentation tonight and ensure them at least personally that I'm in favor of the Chick-fil-A being here, and I want to compliment them on their preparation and presentation. And certainly, uh, I'm Mr. Jarboe's dissertation, uh, he makes a good case. Uh, but that said, uh, I'm still not comfortable with the traffic solutions and the, and the many open questions that surround what MDOT and Wayne County may or may not do. And I'd like to propose that we table this issue until, but those two issues are resolved. And then bring it back, uh, once we know that the solutions that are proposed by Mr. Laverty are adequate and accepted and effectuated uh prior to the time that this restaurant opens. So that's my motion.
All right, so you have a request or a motion to table this item. Uh, Mr. Ventura, is that to a date to be determined?
Yeah, I mean, I think that um everybody, certainly Mr. Tormino will, will carry the ball with the city and, and get uh everybody motivated at the county and, and at MDOT to address the issues that are here. And, and uh, I would, I would let him govern the time that this comes back to us when he's of a, of an opinion that we have the pieces in place to uh, to solve these problems.
Okay, thank you, sir. And let me see if there is support for that motion's table. Going twice? If there's no support for the motion, the motion will fail. That uh opens the floor again for a motion.
Mr. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagnow.
In looking at the approving resolution, I'm looking at number nine and number ten, that speaks to having uh, traffic agreement with the county, with DOT uh prior to opening. Can that language be stiffened up in any way that Mark deems proper to, to accomplish what Pete wanted to do and what we need to do to make sure this thing's right?
Mr. Tormino, do you have any uh thoughts on that?
Well, one thought that comes to mind would be that between the time um this item finds its way onto a city council agenda, that every effort be made uh to accomplish exactly what Mr. Ventura suggested. And that is, is to get some level of uh, of, of reading or comfort coming from the other governmental agencies, Wayne County and uh, and MDOT. The way that, uh, just so that um the petitioner knows, the way, may, maybe Mr. Caremagnow, if we want to um indicate um or read out what those conditions, those two conditions are.
I can do that. Uh, number nine would be no less than six weeks prior to the scheduled opening of the Chick-fil-A. Uh, the petitioner shall submit to the Department of Public Safety Traffic Bureau for its review and approval details of how traffic will be managed, both on and off-site, during the times when the stacking capacity of the drive-through lanes has exceeded or when undue traffic injection is occurring on the adjacent public thoroughfares. That's number nine. Number ten would be that all traffic improvements, including additions or modifications to the traffic signals, approach geometrics or traffic lanes as deemed necessary by either Wayne County or the Michigan DOT to mitigate traffic impacts on the project shall be completed prior to the opening of the restaurant. I think that's where, that's really what I think we find is, or some of us find necessary. Is, is it binding enough to say, yeah, yeah, we need something from the DOT and from Wayne County uh in writing or in agreement prior to this day opening, even after all your work's done?
Um, and my comment's really related to number ten and and so we could append language to that condition um if the commission agrees. The other thing I would uh maybe change is the traffic impacts of this project and just leave it the traffic impacts in complete head of the project. Um, after listening to the traffic consultant today, he talked about um improvements that are necessary uh with the existing conditions and those, a separate set of uh improvements uh recommended for um for the project uh or to mitigate the project impacts, I would say that we would want to improve uh them regardless. Um, or uh all, all, all impacts associated uh both with the project and current. Uh, and that is a, that's a, that's a cost that um really is going to have to be borne by uh the developer. I, I don't, I don't know if, you know, what, what, clearly the approach modifications are something that they have in the plans. Uh, the other improvements, the signal uh timing issues and, and uh uh the pad signals, I'm guessing are not significant costs, uh but they are something that needs to be coordinated between uh the city, the county, and the state.
So, so, so does that come back to be within the timeframe of this project? Or does anybody know that?
Yeah, this would have to be, well, as written, it would certainly have to be undertaken before the restaurant opens. Is that, was that your question, uh, Mr. Caremagnow? I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think so. Is, is it realistic that those things can be done and, and if we're talking about the fall for this restaurant to open?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, in the timeframe with COVID, and who knows what twenty-one's gonna hold?
Yeah, we're not talking about very capital-intensive projects, and I'll let Mr. Laverty maybe uh respond further to this, but, you know, it, you know, we're not adding a signal here, we're not replacing signals. I, I believe, you know, maybe the sinking could, you know, may, maybe there's some additional um capital cost on, on, on the signals that they need to be upgraded to allow the synchronization. Uh, but um, but I don't think it's, it's out of the realm of possibilities that all that be completed prior to the opening of the restaurant. Mr. Laverty?
You're right about that. Um, I don't know if it's insignificant. I don't want to write the check, but I'm gonna guess that uh you have to add some signal heads and hopefully the spans and everything all work out. Um, this head push buttons have to have their little pedestals and have them be in the right places. I don't know, like, it's probably less than fifty thousand, but I'm not a hundred percent sure that. We didn't really sit down to figure that out. We, I could have, but I didn't do that. But it's also, it's also, it's not a matter of, of having to put in um something that is gonna take a long time, long lead time to get the, the study, for example, uh signal poles, there's like eighteen months to get the, a signal pole, the steel signal poles. So in this, in this case, these, this can be done and designed. The question is getting it approved and somebody committed to doing it, that's the question. But it can get done be, in, within the time this is gonna open up, that's for sure.
So I think that's the key thing that we're hearing from our commissioners, is that we realize that, that this is gonna cause a traffic impact. We want to try to minimize that impact in the area as much as possible so that um we don't want to get into a situation where the development moves forward and is built, and then there's a traffic nightmare. And then we're trying to wedge in fixes for that after the fact. We want to see those come online uh before, so.
I understand. It's uh, probably the folks from Chick-fil-A want to do the same thing. Uh, and I would guess though that um, one, I, well, I shouldn't guess. I, I don't know why the intersection is the way it is. It seems like it shouldn't be. Uh, there's nothing really, it just doesn't make sense to me, but a lot of things sometimes don't. Um, but working with MDOT and the city and the county, I don't think it's gonna be a big problem here. We can get it done.
Mr. Uh, this is, this is Frank. Um, Mr. Uh, Chairman, I'm playing.
Mr. Jarboe?
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, so I would, you know, in one breath, I told you that we're committed to the city and we are here to work with you. And the next breath, I'm gonna tell you that if there's a cost to bear with this, we're more than willing to take that on. Uh, we can definitely uh, we'll take that on, we'll take on the project of getting this approved, and I think we can get it approved prior to Chick-fil-A opening. If you, you know, if you want to make that part of your condition, and then if there's a cost to bear with that, you know, we want to make this improvement to the city, and we'll do that. We'll, 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 we'll bear that cost.
Well, that's, that's usually words to Wayne County's ears.
I'm sure it is.
Ian, I gotta, I have a question.
Plus, I have a chicken sandwich to buy from Mr. Ventura.
Go ahead, uh, Mr. Bonjero.
So, so, okay, so uh, Mr. Laverty, would you propose these changes to the county and to MDOT, right? And then their traffic experts either agree or disagree, you kind of go back around and somehow or another you guys agree to what's gonna fix this. Who enforces it? Mark, is that the building department that enforces it before it opens or? You know, how do we, who's out there watching it be adjusted and then saying, yep, that's it, it's perfect, let's go? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, there, it has to be coordinated between uh the different agencies and city departments to make sure that um, the project was completed as uh, as agreed upon. So yeah, that would, that would, that, the inspection department ultimately uh would take direction from uh either planning or engineering uh and maybe even MDOT and to make sure that everything is working appropriately uh before issuing the uh, the occupancy permit.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Uh, so we're back at looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
Just one point of clarification before we move forward. Uh, Mr. Toramina, uh, item ten in the approving resolution. So this thing gets approved and they get a building permit and they build a building. Uh, who, who or what, what entity makes sure that all of the traffic recommendations, as they're worked out between MDOT and the county are done prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy? How's that, how does that work?
Mr. Toramina?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that that would be the, the role of our engineering division and MDOT and uh to the extent that it, uh, in Wayne County. Uh, but, but I'm not sure where the coordination and responsibilities lie uh there. Maybe Mr. Laverty knows, but I believe most of that is by Wayne County, uh, so.
I can help you with this a little bit. Um, the changes to the signal are going to be, let's just say that, that the developer's gonna get taken up on his offer and they're gonna do it, then that would mean that he would pay for the design of the changes, he'd come up with the plans, he would hire a contractor, and there would be a permit from MDOT to make those changes. And um, it would be really good if, if that coordinates with um the opening of the store or the, of the restaurant. Uh, it'll be close, I, I hope, especially because the developer will be able to control the schedule. Uh, so I don't think, I mean, I don't think that's going to be a big issue, but it's going to be a permit from MDOT. Uh, there'll be some back and forth on review plans about what you're gonna do, how you're gonna do it. And then um Frank can hire a contractor that is approved by MDOT, and uh he's off and running. And the MDOT permit uh will be inspected by MDOT, or maybe MDOT would ask Wayne County to do it, but I doubt it. So would that help or make it worse?
Your chairman. Appreciate the honesty.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to go back to Mark one more time. Um, so are you comfortable with number ten as written that it requires that this work be done prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy?
Yes, I'm happy with that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Yeah, it's kind of the question I, I thought I was hearing you ask is basically who's, who's the final arbiter of uh, who says that yes, all these conditions have been met, you can now open? And it seems like that's the building and inspection departments. Okay, uh, again, uh, let's look for motion.
Let me give this a shot.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna go with Mr. Caremagnow.
Sure you don't want to, sure you don't want to read it, Carol?
No, it's a nice, long one. Good for you, Sam.
Thank you. Sam's already read part of it, so he's, he's, he's in for a penny and for a pound.
He's read it and rewritten it, so good.
That the approved resolution to request uh, that, that the request to redevelop the commercial shopping center shop, Solivonia, including demolishing a portion of the existing building, constructing a full-service restaurant with drive-through facilities at Chick-fil-A, constructing in addition and renovating the exterior facade of the existing building, and constructing a multi-tenant retail building with drive-through facilities at two-nine-two-five-zero to two-nine-three-five-zero. Plymouth Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval in the following conditions. Number one, if the overall site plan identified as sheet number C zero-one dated November fifth, twenty-twenty, as revised, prepared, prepared by Atwell, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, the landscape plan identified as sheet number four, C O four, dated November fifth, twenty-twenty, as revised, prepared by Atwell, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Except that a plan for replacing the trees and other plant materials along the site's frontage on Middle Belt Road shall be incorporated as part of phase one of the development and submitted to the planning department for review and approval, and shall be completed prior to occupancy of the Chick-fil-A restaurant. Number three, that all disturbed lawn areas be sodded in new hydro-seding. Number four, that underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department and thereafter permanently maintained in health. in healthy condition. Number five, that the exterior building elevation plans for the Chick-fil-A restaurant as received by the planning commission on November ninth, twenty twenty are hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number six, retail one elevations plan identified in drawing S D zero-three, prepared by N O R R as received by the planning commission on November ninth, twenty twenty is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number seven, that the retail two elevations plan identified as drawing S D zero-four, prepared by N O R R as received by the planning commission on November ninth, twenty twenty is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number eight, that all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening that should be of compatible character, material and color to other exterior materials on the building. Number nine, here's where the tricky part comes. That no less than six weeks prior to the scheduled opening of the Chick-fil-A restaurant, the petitioner shall, shall submit to the Department of Public Traffic Safety Bureau for its review and approval details on how traffic will be managed both on and off-site during times when the stack capacity of the drive-through lanes is exceeded or when undue traffic congestion is occurring on the adjacent public thoroughfares. Number ten, that all traffic improvements, including additions or modifications to the traffic signals approach geometric or traffic lanes as deemed necessary by either Wayne County or the DOT to mitigate traffic impacts of the project shall be completed prior to the opening of the restaurant and a CFO issued, approved by the city. Uh, number eleven, that all, that the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of building materials that shall be comp, that shall complement that of the buildings, the enclosure gates shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting panel fiberglass. Uh, number twelve, that the proposed construction shall meet the Wayne County stormwater ordinance, including detention requirements and the petitioner shall secure all required permits, including soil erosion and sedimentation control. Thirteen, that all pole-mounted light fixtures shall not exceed twenty feet and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways. Fourteen, this approval is subject to petition of being granted to variance for zoning board appeals for deficient parking and any conditions related thereto. Number fifteen, that any future drive-through restaurant or retail one shall require a waiver use. Number sixteen, that only conforming wall signage is approved of this petition. Any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Seventeen, that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on the site, including, but not limited to the building or around the windows. Number eighteen, that the specific plans refer, referenced in this approved resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time building permits are applied for and pursuant to section nineteen point one zero of ordinance nine, five, four, three. The zoning ordinance of the city of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by city council and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be nullified at the expiration of said period.
Sam, you're on mute the whole time, so can you start over?
Number one.
All right, we have a, uh, we have an approving resolution on the floor. Is there support for that?
Support.
Support by Mrs. Smiley. Uh, is there discussion on the motion? There's no discussion. I just wanted to briefly make a comment and just say that, if, that this is a, uh, uh, a particular tenant, Chick-fil-A that has been requested by many residents in the community. It's something that we hear on a regular basis. People say, when is a Chick-fil-A going to come into the city? And uh, I think this is a kind of exciting time to see this petition come before us, but in the same respect, uh, this development at this corner is not just a Chick-fil-A. It's actually a uh, a very nice upgrade of, of the retail building and in addition of an other attractive-looking retail building in the corner. And uh, I just want to thank the developer for uh, giving us a petition that has attractive-looking buildings and is making a significant investment into this area of the city. And I think that Chick-fil-A will be an anchor tenant that will help those other uh, buildings around there uh, thrive. And I, I hope that this is a, a very good development in the future uh, and is looked at as a, as a uh, key development in the city, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, with that, there's no other comments or questions. If the secretary is ready, please call the roll on the motion to approve by Mr. Caremago and supported by Mrs. Smiley.
Caremago votes aye. Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mrs. McQ?
Aye.
Mr. Badger?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Chairman Wilshow?
Votes aye and motion passes. We'll go on to city council on approving recommendation. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming this evening and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much for your time. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you all. I'll have a good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you all very much. Uh, with that, uh, we are done with item number one now and we move on to item number two on our agenda, Mr. Secretary.
Petition number twenty twenty dash one-one dash zero-eight dash zero-seven, submitted by Adams Park Development LLC, requesting approval of the master deed bylaws and site plan pursuant to section eighteen point six-two of the city of Livonia zoning ordinance number five, four, three is amended to develop a site condominium Adams Park consisting of thirty-nine single-family homes on the properties at one-four-four-one-six Harrison Avenue and two-eight-two-zero-one Linden Avenue, the former Adams Elementary School located on the south side of Linden between Inkster and Middleville Roads in the southeast quarter of section twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Tormina?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this request involves the development of a condominium subdivision. Uh, the location is the site of the former Adams Elementary School, which is at the southeast corner of Linden and Harrison Avenues. Uh, this property is eleven point eight-three acres in area. It has six hundred and eighty-five feet of frontage on Harrison and about seven hundred and eighty-five feet on uh, Linden. Uh, surrounding of the site are single-family subdivisions to the west and to the east. To the west is Compton Village and Harlow Subdivisions. Uh, the zoning there is uh, R one. Uh, to the east is Buckingham Village Subdivision, also zoned R one. Uh, and to the north across uh, Linden is Bishop Estates, which is a six-unit attached cluster housing development. And then uh, adjacent to that is Western Gulf Estates, zoned R two. To the south of this property is the John F. Dooley Park, which is zone P L, public land. Uh, the subject property is currently in the process of being rezoned from P L public land to R one, one-family residential. City council gave first reading on the rezoning on November fourth. Second reading and roll call, which are the final steps in the rezoning process, are on hold pending a review of this site plan. Under the R one zoning, uh, the lot size minimum is seven thousand two hundred square feet per lot. Lot width minimum is sixty feet and depth is one hundred and twenty feet. Uh, the site plan shows a total of thirty-nine condominium lots. Most of the lots, as you can see here, are shown having frontage on two new streets that are designed in a U-sho, U-shaped configuration. There's also a short cul-de-sac which extends uh, south from the road along the west side of the uh, development. Lots eleven through thirty-nine would have access on the internal streets and then lots one through ten would have direct frontage on Harrison Avenue, which borders the site along its west side. All thirty-nine lots would meet or exceed the R one lot size requirements. In fact, roughly half of the lots in this development measure seventy feet in width. There are three private open space areas. The largest is in the southeast corner of the property and includes a detention pond, uh, which is necessary for collecting and managing the site's stormwater runoff. Uh, this park measures about forty-seven thousand six hundred square feet or one point one acres. About sixty percent of the area would be devoted uh, to the detention basin. There are two separate access paths to the park uh, that would be available between lots twenty-one and twenty-two. One is for the, for pedestrians to access uh, the upland portion of the site. Uh, and then the other is actually a, um, a wider path uh, that runs along the back of lots twenty-two through twenty-six that would be used uh, for maintenance equip, or access for maintenance equipment. Uh, the other two open space areas are much smaller. Uh, one is in the southwest corner of the site, uh, between lot one and Dooley Park. And then the other is a narrow strip along Linden, uh, which is adjacent to lot thirty-nine and that one would be used for landscaping and the placement, placement of a subdivision sign. Uh, so the other two areas, which are not as obvious to, to see on this plan, one is located here in the southwest corner and then that narrow strip that I mentioned for landscaping and the monument sign is located here. For all new plats and condominium subdivisions, the city requires the dedication of public open space at a ratio of seven hundred and twenty square feet per lot, which for Adam Park would equal twenty-eight thousand and eighty square feet. The combined area of the three open space areas totals fifty-two thousand eight hundred and nineteen square feet, which is nearly double the required land area. However, the petitioner is seeking approval to waive the requirement of dedicating the open space in the form of public parks and is instead proposing to assign these areas as general, general co, common elements on the master deed of the condominium subdivision. Uh, I'm not going to go through the details of the homes. Uh, additional information was provided to the planning commission, uh, which shows the design of the homes. I'll let the petitioner do that. Instead, Mr. Chairman, if I, uh, again at this time, is read out the correspondence.
Sure, go ahead.
First letter is from our engineering division dated November seventeenth and it reads, in accordance with your request, the engineering division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time. The property has assigned the address range of, oh, and I'm not going to read the one from the previous development. Which is what I was doing. To sign the address of two-eight-two-zero-one Linden Avenue and one-four-four-one-six Harrison Avenue. The legal description included on the plan submitted by the owners appears to be correct and should be used to describe the parcels. The proposed development is currently serviced by Public Water Main Storm and Sanitary Sewers and the submitted drawings indicate that new utility connections will be constructed to service the proposed parcel layout. Easements will need to be provided for the new water and sanitary sewers as well as portions of the storm sewer that are to be maintained by the city. At this time, exhibit B drawings have not been provided to show proposed easements, so we cannot determine if the proposed easements are correct. The proposed construction will be required to meet the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance, including detention requirements. Detention is shown on the preliminary plans and a full review of the proposed development will be completed when plans are submitted for permitting. It should be noted that the proposed outlet for the development is owned by Wayne County and therefore stormwater permitting will be through the Wayne County Department of Public Service. The submitted drawings indicated, indicate that the proposed roadways are to be twenty-seven feet wide, but the current engineering department standards require roadways to be thirty-one feet wide. Access to the detention pond and accessory structures will need to be hardscaped, either sidewalk or pavers, to be able to drive equipment on for any future maintenance as well as for residents to access the proposed open areas. The submitted drawings do not indicate roadway names for any of the proposed streets, but it should be noted that Adams will not be allowed for any of the roadways in this development as that name is already in use by roadways on the west side of the city. That letter is signed by David Lear, uh, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter uh, coming from the Department of Public Safety, Livonia Fire and Rescue dated October, or December seventh that reads, this office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with a request to develop site condominium consisting of thirty-nine single-family homes. We have no objection to the proposal with the following stipulations. One, any curves or corner of streets that shall accommodate emergency vehicles with a turning radius of fifty-three feet wall-to-wall and an inside turning radius of twenty-nine feet, six inches. And number two, standard for residential cul-de-sacs is fifty feet with a minimum right-of-way radius of sixty feet to provide for sidewalks and utilities. And that letter is signed by Greg Thomas, fire marshal. Next is a letter coming from the Department of Public Safety Division of Police dated November twenty-third, indicating that they have no objections to the proposal. That letter is signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter of no objection from our inspection department dated December tenth and signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. A letter of no objection from the Department of Finance dated November twentieth and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. And lastly, a letter of no objection from the Office of the Treasurer dated December second and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tormina. And I will note that in our packet, we do have a copy of uh, floor plan elevations, uh, renderings, an example of which is on the screen for us to see right now. And we also have a copy of the master deed and bylaws uh, for this development, so that's also in our packet. Uh, is there any comments or questions of any of the commissioners for the planning staff? I don't see any, so I will ask if there are petitioners here this evening. So please click raise hand and we'll recognize you so we can welcome you to our meeting. There we are. Good evening, sir. Uh, Mr. Michelson?
Yes, hi, you're.
Hi, good evening. I think we also have, uh, is it your partner is, uh, George?
Good evening. It's George Major. I just wanted to say hello and Stuart will be making the presentation.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, who wants to go first from the petitioner and uh, sort of introduce uh, this uh, site plan to us?
Well, it's a site plan that uh, you've seen a few times. We did make uh, uh, corrections and uh, additions to it from our first meeting, the very first meeting we had in front of you. Um, yes, I mean, I, I don't know what else to say besides what Mark has already related. It's thirty-nine lots. Uh, you can see the site plan. We increased the size of the, the width of, uh, many of the lots to seventy feet and some were even wider than seventy. The minimum is sixty. Um, the minimum depth is one-twenty. We, we made many of them more the, uh, deeper than, uh, the one-twenty. Uh, we've increased the depth of the lots that back up to Lion Street. Uh, we're over one-forty on those lots. And that'll leave enough room for rear yard drainage, plenty of rear yard drainage. And we think, um, that'll accommodate the people that live on Lions that have complaints of some issues with uh, flooding. We will be able to handle any excess water from their lots. Uh, in the prior, when the school was there, they had parking and they had no place for the um, the rainwater to run off, so I think we're solving their problem. And uh, we're very excited about uh, building these homes. We know that there's a shortage of lots in general in uh, in the whole area. And the addition of this uh, community would be a big addition to the city of Livonia.
Thank you, Mr. Michelson. And I think just uh, because I know we're used to seeing these plans, but uh, for the sake of anyone who's, who's not used to seeing these plans, um, you intend on having in the rear of the lots, especially along the uh, lots near Lions, um, there's going to be a system of uh, swales and catch basins that will collect water and then take it to that uh, retention pond?
Correct. And then uh, all the stormwater from our site ends up from the sump pumps, from the homes, from the rear yard drainage, from the street drainage will end up in that um, detention. And then it outlets into the uh, into the storm sewer. And the purpose of the retention is that it slows the uh, volume of water into the storm, so it won't flood the system. So it has plenty, it has over a hundred-year storm retention and it'll store the water first and then slowly outlet it into the storm system.
All right, very good. That's exactly what we're used to seeing. Uh, is there any questions for the petitioner from any of our commissioners this evening? Going once, going twice. Anyone have any questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Caremago?
I know there was a question last time about front-entry garages and side-entry garages and, and if it was talked about already, I apologize, but where would the front entry or where would the side-entry garages be located on this map?
Well, all the lots are designed to be front entry because of the width. So that change was made in the uh, master deed after the last meeting when I believe it was you that. So that change was made in the master deed after the last meeting when I believe it was you that caught that. So everything will be a front now. There are corner lots, uh like for an example, thirty-five, thirty-six, twenty-two, that will be side entry. Because a corner lot can accommodate the side entry, but the other lots will all be front.
Okay, so there is, there is a few that'll be side, side entry. Okay, that answers that for me, and let me also ask you, the detention pond, I I think we talked about a brick paver that goes three-quarter. Half around the detention pond and then a walkway with a little cul-de-sac on the end there. Is there any reason that can't go all the way around that detention pond to to for as a walking area?
Well, actually, our plan was, there is no reason, but our plan was to have a little area there with a bench and maybe even a pergola. Uh as a sitting area for people to sit because we're gonna enhance the pond with a fountain. So it's gonna be an enhanced uh pond and uh it's a good place for somebody to walk out and sit and meet some of their neighbors if they would like. The um so that was a landscape enhancement, the the other one is gonna be for service vehicles. Uh every so often, you have to have a service vehicle come in and clean out the uh the detention pond, so that's. But it's gonna be a grassy type um mat that will look nice. But uh we'll be able to uh handle any uh equipment that they have to use to get back there.
Okay, and I think you said that last time, I forgot that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Care Magna, any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Michelson, uh who's gonna be responsible for cutting and maintaining the grass around that pond area, is that gonna be the association?
Yeah, we're gonna form an association and we're gonna collect yearly uh dues from each one of the homeowners. And they're gonna handle all the commons areas, including the front where the signage or landscaping will be and all the maintenance of the all the open space and the pond.
Okay, great. Okay, any uh any other questions on this uh petition from any of our commissioners? If not, I'm going to go to our audience and see if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this petition, if so, please click raise hand. We'll give you an opportunity to speak, we have Ms. Laura Franklin, you can unmute yourself. Good evening, Ms. Franklin.
Good evening, everyone, uh I had questions concerning the retention pond and also on the site plan. Um where does it show the discharge of the water, which sewage line would the water be going into?
Well, it's not shown on the plan, but it's all underground, there's uh it ties into an underground storm sewer.
Yes, but I I needed to know if it would be um heading toward east of Harrison, which is next to my property. Or is there another storm drain that would be utilized?
Evan, are you on?
He is, let me uh let me unmute him and just.
Evan is our engineer and he can, he can actually explain that better than I could.
Okay, let me just uh just to make sure that we have a decorum here, I just wanna let.
Outlet, just so you know though, the outlet is is um on the uh west end of the um. It's all underground, but it's at the west end of the pond. And Evan will explain it better than I could.
Well, Evan addressed that, but uh I just want to make sure we don't get into a back and forth between uh our audience and the petitioner, we wanna try to uh. Maintain the questions through the commission and we'll uh get those questions answered, so. Mr. Priest, good evening, and uh we'll see if you can answer this question about the storm sewer system.
Hello, thank you, uh can you hear me?
We do.
Okay, good, um if yeah, if we go back to that sheet right there, the outlet is uh you see on the east end of the pond, there's a uh. That right there, that pipe's gonna connect to an underground pipe, it's an eight-foot diameter pipe and it's uh, I wanna say it's. Ten or twelve feet underground and it goes, flows north to the uh, I think it's Livonia Drain Number Two, which runs east under Linden. But actually all goes uh away from Harrison. And the lots that face Harrison, there'll be a rear yard storm sewer which you can see on this plan too. Uh and we're gonna try and collect as much of that lot, including the roof, as we can, uh obviously the driveways are gonna run out into Harrison. Rest of it, we're gonna collect and put in that pond and put it underground in that eight-foot diameter sewer. Which for Ms. Franklin's information, that is uh, it is all separate from your sanitary sewer, if that's your concern. You know, the city has some issues with things like that, or uh maybe footing drains are connected. Sanitary sewers, that won't be the case here, all of the sump pumps will connect directly to the storm drain, which will be kept completely separate from the sanitary sewer area.
Okay, thank you for that response, Mr. Priest, uh Ms. Franklin, hopefully that addresses your question, is there anything else that you'd like to say?
Um, well, I'm just concerned because my property, um there's access to not just water, but also sewage. That goes right next to my property, so that's why I need to know if the flow of the um site. Would mainly be shifting toward where those outlets are at my property. And I don't have a sub-pump in my basement and I haven't had flooding in my basement um since I've been here for quite some years. So that is my concern in terms of how water is gonna flow, cuz it's all around my property.
Sure, for what it's worth, Ms. Franklin, the uh each each petition that comes before us, and this has been the case for a number of years, uh because of Wayne County Stormwater Management Ordinances. Developments such as this are, have to uh basically retain their water on-site that that comes from storm water. And uh into these ponds and then they need to slowly discharge it at a very controlled release rate into existing storm sewer systems. Like the uh this large pipe that uh that they're referring to, that this is gonna go into, so it's not going to be discharged into. Uh anyone's yard or into any open areas, it's gonna go into a system and and it's gonna be done at a very controlled rate, so it should not impact or cause any additional. Uh flooding or or water routine on any neighboring properties.
Okay, all right, then, um I did have one other question, I think um what the builder is doing is phenomenal to bring value to the neighborhood. But I had a question concerning a potential traffic um challenge. Um Linden Street, there was a survey that was done in two thousand fifteen and it was in April, the twenty-second. And they just did it for a twenty-four-hour period and they noticed that there was two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight cars, or well, not cars, but vehicles that went through. And then two thousand, I mean, April twenty-third, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-four vehicles had went through, and this was back in two thousand fifteen. And with um AADT, they said the average is two thousand four hundred and eighty. Um vehicles going through over a twenty-four-hour period, my question is. The entrance that is closest to Harrison, um currently, where it is placed. That is the same place where the new buses actually release students and um have students on at Harrison and Linden Street. So um early in the morning, the congestion of of traffic and throughout the day, there's a lot of traffic on Linden Street. So has has that been considered?
The uh, this plan has been looked at by our um by our traffic division of our police department and they indicated that they had no concerns with the traffic that would be. Caused by this development, they, the police department will usually give us recommendations, like you may have heard on the previous petition. If they think that no left turn signs or no right turn signs or any other traffic controls are necessary, they'll indicate that, but uh. That hasn't been noted in the case of this development uh uh for essentially thirty, thirty-some homes that are, that are gonna be here.
Okay, I do understand it, I did hear the letter that um approved it, but there was no mention of. What was going on with the buses that actually stopped and they stopped on um the north side. And where they stop, it's right there where the driveway is.
Right, it's possible that the, i- if this property is developed um a- as we see it here, that the school system may. Have to review where they have their bus stop and may make some adjustments to that uh to ensure the safety of the children that that get on those buses.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Franklin, for attending this evening, and we'll see if there's anyone else in our audience wishing to speak uh for or against this item, make any comments, you're welcome to click raise hand. I don't see anyone else uh doing that, so uh we'll go back to Mr. Michelson, uh is there any other comments that uh you would like to make in regards to uh the petition before us?
Well, the only thing, um I'm hoping that uh you all agree that this will be a a great addition to the city, we have a good reputation. Uh in many of the cities that were in, all the cities we've built in around Livonia, we actually have built in Livonia previously years ago. And um I think you'll be happy with our development, the way we deal with the city and the inspectors and everybody involved, uh we. We um think of ourselves as uh very professional and um we're looking forward to getting approved and uh. Being able to start uh hopefully before spring.
All right, thank you, Mr. Michelson, any comments or questions from the commission? If not, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long.
Like to offer an approving resolution, at the request to develop a site condominium, Adams Park, consisting of thirty-nine single-family homes on the properties. At fourteen-four-one-six Harrison Avenue and twenty-eight-two-zero-one Linden Avenue. The former Adams Elementary School site is hereby approved, subject to city council approval and the following conditions. Number one, that the site plan identified as Sheet Zero Three dated November seventeenth, two thousand twenty, prepared by Michael L. Priest and Associates is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that the issues outlined in the correspondence dated December seventh, two thousand twenty from the Fire Marshal shall be. Resolved to the satisfaction of Livonia Fire and Rescue Division. Number three, that the landscape planting plan identified as L-one and the landscape notes and details identified as L-two. Both dated November nineteenth, two thousand twenty, as revised, prepared by Nagy Devlin Lamb Design, are hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number four, that streetlights and sidewalks shall be installed throughout the developments to the satisfaction of the engineering department. Number five, that the condominium master deed and bylaws comply with the requirements of the subdivision control ordinance Title Sixteen. Chapter sixteen point zero four through sixteen point four zero of the Livonia Court Code of Ordinance and Article. Twenty, Section twenty point zero one through twenty point zero six of zoning ordinance number five-four-three. Number six, that section six point seven garages of the bylaw shall be modified to include front entries where applicable. Number seven, that the brick used in construction of each condominium unit shall be full-face, four-inch brick. Number eight, in the event of a conflict between the provisions set forth in the master deed and bylaws and the requirements set forth in the City of Livonia's zoning ordinance, number five-four-three. As amended, the zoning ordinance requirements shall prevail and petitioner shall comply with the zoning ordinance requirements. Number nine, that the petitioner shall include language in the master deed and bylaws or a separate recordable instrument wherein the condominium association shall reimburse the City of Livonia. For any maintenance or repair costs incurred for the stormwater detention, retention and outlet facilities. And giving the City of Livonia the right to impose liens on each lot owner's property prorata and place said. And place said charges on their real estate tax bills, in the event said charges are not paid by the condominium association or each lot owner within thirty days of billing. For the Livonia, for the City of Livonia. Number ten, that all required cash deposits, certified checks, irrevocable bank letters of credit and/or surety bonds, which shall be established by the city. Engineer pursuant to Article eighteen of ordinance number five-four-three, Section eighteen point six-six of the ordinance. Shall be deposited with the city prior to the issuance of engineering permits for this site condominium development. Number eleven, that only a conforming entrance marker is approved with this petition. And any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And number twelve, pursuant to Section nineteen point one zero of ordinance number five-four-three of the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia. This approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by the city council. And unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support for the motion? Ooh, I heard multiple people, I didn't see who it was. I, who do we have uh supporting?
I think Pete, I think Pete said it twice.
This, Mr. Ventura, okay, very good, so we have, Mr. Long, thank you, uh when the uh, when the. Uh petition is in front of us on the screen, we don't get to see all the people in the, in the windows, so. Uh we have a motion to support by, or excuse me, motion to approve by Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Ventura, is there any discussion on that motion? If there is none, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Uh Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mr. Banjero.
Aye.
Magna votes aye, Chairman will shout.
Votes aye, motion passes, we'll go on to city council with an approving recommendation. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming this evening and we wish you luck on your project.
Thank you very much, appreciate all your help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, you have a good evening.
Good evening.
And with that, uh we have one last item on our agenda, Mr. Secretary.
And that, sir, is the approval of the minutes of the one thousand one hundred and sixty-second public hearing and regular meeting. Held by this planning commission on November tenth, two thousand and twenty.
Is there a motion to approve that?
I move that we approve those minutes.
By Mrs. Smiley, supported by.
My support.
By Mrs. McHugh, uh let's see, do we have everybody here for that, yes, everyone was here for that meeting, so. If there is no objection from the commission, uh we'll show seven to approve the minutes with uh Smiley and McHugh as the makers of that motion. Uh that takes us to the end of our agenda, is there any other business to come before the commission? If not, a uh motion to adjourn is gonna be in order.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Long and supported by.
Support.
By Mrs. McHugh, all right, we have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Long and Mrs. McHugh, uh before we uh show the roll on that. And adjourn our meeting, I do want to thank um all my fellow commissioners for, uh this is our last meeting of the year, so I do want to thank uh. All of my fellow commissioners for their hard work this year and of course to the planning staff uh for all their work that they've done this year. Uh to bring these meetings um to the community, uh the the tremendous amount of uh homework that goes into each of these uh meetings. And uh of course, we've had probably the most unique year that we've had in in a long, long time in terms of uh. The challenges that we faced uh in even conducting meetings uh this year and having to move to an online format. Uh it's been challenging, it's uh, it's worked out okay, uh as far as. As far as I can tell, everyone is staying safe, and we're able to continue to do business that the community expects us to do. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate everyone's efforts. I wish all of you a very happy holiday time, a Merry Christmas, and same to our community.
You too.
Same to you, Ian.
Same to all of you, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, good night.
Merry Christmas.
Absolutely, guys. We will stay safe and healthy everyone.
Good night.
Yeah.
Very good. And with those last comments, I will ask that our secretary show seven on the motion to adjourn, and that will end our meeting tonight at 9:33 PM. And I do want to also thank Livonia Television for bringing this meeting to our community. Good night, Livonia, and be safe.
Night, guys.